Pledge.
David.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning. This is our second meeting of the year. Happy New Year once again. This is, uh, meeting number two. It is Thursday, January the 11th, 2024, approximately 10:01 a.m. And with that being said, do we have anyone here who would like to make public comments? No? Okay. Uh, before moving on, I'd like to recognize a dear friend of mine and all of us here in the audience, Mr. Tony Bernard. Tony, welcome. Tony is, uh, actually running for, uh, Commissioner in Trumbull County. He was the former, uh, county commissioner many moons ago, and he would like to come see what a real meeting is and, uh, see how we get along and how much camaraderie that we have here among our board. So we welcome you, and you're welcome here every time, and it's nice to see you. Good luck to you.
Tony, we'd like to have gone to a couple of the meetings in Trumbull as well, but we're afraid we'll get picked on, so we don't go. We keep our, we keep our distance.
I understand that completely.
Why do you think he's here?
Are there meetings online?
Yes.
They are.
Yeah.
I'm kidding. I never really.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if they have enough tape to keep them all up, but they're not taped.
All right.
It's unbelievable.
So, as we move on.
Okay. Alrighty, so with no public comments, I will ask for approval of the reorganizational meeting, which was Monday, January 8th, 2024, approval of previous minutes of Board Meeting Number One, Monday, January 8th, 2024, and approval of bills for pay.
I make a motion to approve, uh, approval of the reorganization meeting, Monday, January 8th, and approval of previous minutes of the Board Meeting Number One, Monday, January 8th, and approval of bills for payment.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant.
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna start hollering. It's a good one.
All right, moving on, legal notice, number one. Uh, Audrey.
Commissioners, this is a notice of public meeting for restricting construction of a large solar and wind power generating facilities in the unincorporated areas of Austintown, Bieber, Berlin, Canfield, Coitville, Goshen, Jackson, Milton, Holon, and Springfield Townships, Ohio, to be held at 5:30 p.m. on Thursday, February 15th, 2024, at McHill Hall, located at 7574 Columbiana, Canfield Road, Canfield, Ohio, 44406, and this is as, at the request of each of the townships listed.
Audrey, um, that's nine townships. We did, uh, green already. So that's 10. Who's the four that did not request anything, you know?
You've had.
These are 10 of them.
Yeah, so I said. And there's 14 townships. So who are the four that have not? Yeah, I wonder why they have not requested, or, you know, in some instances, they don't have the land, like Borden. You know, there's no.
Berlin's not in there.
Yes.
We have Berlin.
There, yeah.
Yeah, Seibert.
Goshen, Seibert. Smith. Hmm, not Smith. No, Smith's one of the three.
They have the property land, though.
And it doesn't mean that those townships, they haven't gotten it by the time that you had asked that everything comes. It doesn't mean that those townships.
Yeah, the problem is, is this, you know, we, we told them this was gonna be the last one.
Yes.
That's gonna include everyone, um, or.
And the township association did reach out to everyone. The prosecutor's office also reached out to all the townships and everyone, and these are the ones who did submit by the time that you asked that it be submitted.
Should we, um, send, reach out from our office to see if they're interested in on?
We can't change anything.
Can't do, you can't change it, but.
Okay.
Yep.
Well.
All right.
All right. Uh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve legal notices, number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant.
Yes. Journal entry?
Motion to approve journal entries, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Yes, moving on, travels. We have letters A through D, and we will begin with the, uh, coroner's office and Dr. Kennedy. Oh, hello. What's your first name?
Natalie.
Hi, Natalie. Thank you for coming.
Uh, we are requesting, um, continuing education training for two of our investigators to go to the Cuyahoga County Medical Examiner's Office for medical legal.
Thank you. And human resources.
I will hand it that way.
Audrey.
Um, this is the tin, a tin sherm. I am PA HR, serve various courses, I'm gonna say. Acronyms, um, and education, training conferences, seminars, workshops, meetings, hearings, et cetera, within the state of Ohio for the year 2024, estimated at $3,000, and this is general and non-general.
Thank you, Audrey. Prosecutors? Anybody here from prosecutors?
I can do prosecution.
Okay.
The prosecutors is the 10 Ohio Prosecuting Attorney Association, Ohio Supreme Court, Mahoney County Bar Association, National Judicial and Legal Association, various conferences, meetings, seminars, et cetera, within the state of Ohio and other destinations for the year 2024, estimated at 20,000, non-general and continuing education.
Thank you again. And veteran service? Anybody here from the veterans?
Jimmy.
Jimmy? He's our veteran.
It's our veteran. Okay. On quarterly meetings, the FDA Council Administration Convention, O S A C V S O, new officer training and fall school, meetings, conferences, seminars, et cetera, within the state of Ohio and PA for the year 2024, estimated at $15,000, and it's general and it's for accreditation.
Thank you, sir. Motion?
Motion to approve number two travels, A through D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant.
Yes, agreements, letters A through G. All right.
Yes.
Uh, good morning, commissioners. Why is my?
Can hear you, Alex.
Oh, hold on. I'll be down in a second. Hold on.
He's coming down 'cause he thought we couldn't hear him, but did I think?
He could, yeah, he didn't think he could hear, so he said, I'll just be here.
Well, shall we?
So does anybody else have anything to say?
Funny. He may be coming down.
He's right up.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll move on. Oh, that's pretty fast.
Yeah.
He's upstairs.
He's just upstairs.
Wow.
Wow, you're, you're. Pretty quick.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, this is for, uh, latest products, uh, GIS square nine, uh, non-general, $206.87.
Okay. Thank you, Alex.
Thought your morning worked out. Thank you. Okay. Engineers.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, letter B is an agreement with Fida Freightliner for repairs to vehicle number 534 in the estimated amount of $2,790.03. These are non-general funds.
Thank you, Pat. And lead, Phil?
Morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with the Howland Company LLC for chip home repair work at 83 Goretti Drive in Camel in the amount of $11,950, non-general.
Thank you, sir. And sanitary, Mr. Janetti?
Commissioners, letter D is an agreement with SET Incorporated for emergency repairs uh, to a waterline break on Bailey Road in the amount of $7,242.16. Uh, letter E is in agreement with Evaku Water Technologies. This is to provide services for the de-ionizing water purification system utilized in the labs at the, uh, Borden and Meander wastewater treatment plants in the estimated amount of $6,559.9. Uh, letter F's in agreement with Diamond Steel uh, for crane and rigor rental and iron worker and welding services on an as-needed basis for two years in the estimated amount of $40,000. And letter G is in agreement with, uh, Borden Tractor Sales for repairs and maintenance to equipment on an as-needed basis for two years in the estimated amount of $6,000, and these are all non-general funds.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Motion to approve number three agreements, A through G.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Trafficant.
Yes, change orders, letter A, lead.
This is a cha-, a change order with the Howland Company LLC for lead house control and healthy homes work at 230 Marmion Avenue in the amount of $1,785, non-general.
Okay.
Motion to approve change orders, A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Trafficant.
Yes, moving on, under appointments. These are appointments to serve on various boards and/or committees, and, uh, I think they're self-explanatory unless anybody wanted to comment. No? Okay, motion?
Motion to approve number five appointments.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant.
Yes. Resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant.
Yes. Finally, we have resolutions, letters A through G. And we'll begin with, uh, well, commissioners. Go ahead.
Item A is a resolution approving the following voucher for Pearl High Rise Code 5705, one in the following amount for department. Sin source E for $216, and that's for probate court. Item B is a resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the employee separation reserve fund in the amount of $79,432. Um, those are liabilities of employees who are already just retired. Item C is a resolution approving the memorial day allowance of $250 to veteran organizations and $100 to civic groups for Ohio Vice for 307.66, and that's as requested by veteran services.
E. The amount.
Oh, and, um, correction on the minus. There's now on item B, it should be 79,433. It was my type.
Thanks.
Jen with.
Jen.
Item B is a resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the indigent guardianship fund in the amount of $36,000, um, in support of the probate court.
Thank you. Engineers. Pat?
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution of necessity to purchase two 2024 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup trucks from Valley Ford. Uh, this is under the state purchasing contract in the estimated amount of $101,04.
Okay, thank you. And jobs and family services, Audrey Morales, good morning.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Audrey, Nancy. Good morning, Jim Fortinana. Let, letter F is job and family services resolution approving a three-day unpaid suspension for one employee for our department. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And O and B grants.
Hannah, in the house.
Um, this is a resolution to amend resolution 2311009 to accept the additional amount of $180 from the State Emergency Response Commission for fiscal year 2024 local emergency planning committee grant funding for a total of $32,648.
Thank you, Hannah. Commissioners?
A, motion to approve res-, number two resolutions, A through G.
Um, and the, I, I, did you end it, Pat? Did you say an F-250 on it? We have it as 150, but just to make sure we, is F-250 for trucks?
Yes, those are F-250s. I think there might have been a typo.
Yeah.
Yeah. As I amend my.
As amended, yeah.
I amend my second to.
Okay, second. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety.
Yes.
Yes. Moves the business portion of our meeting, and we will have a call for the good of the order and the elected officials or department heads to comment.
Make a comment today?
Yes, you may.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
Let me just make one comment first. And for, uh, Mr. Bernard, I just want you to know that when we go through this agenda, as you see, we, we get through very quickly because we've already looked at everything that's on this agenda at a meeting prior to this, the day before, like with our, it's our processing. And Nancy, our clerk, gets everything ready for us, and we sit down with our administrator and go over every issue that's on here. So I like to do that for people that are new in the audience, so you can't go back, or anybody that's in here that's new that could say, oh, my God, they just blanket this. It's not true. Some of the things that we discuss may not even be on here, so just so you know. Just to clear that up, so in case you do that, you could pattern off of us. Okay, go ahead.
As you know, the way. I don't even want to think about March. We just got into January, but March is coming. And, um, um, just, we have our informational, um, information on the sales tax, which is our impact statement that we were required to do at public hearings. Those will be with the commissioners wherever we go out to meetings or anything else. We will take those with us. They will be available here if anybody wants to see that or have the information. Um, behind us, we have the two boards that were done during the budget, um, budget hearing. The black portion shows what that, um, reduction would be if we did not have the justice tax. Those boards will stay up through the, uh, until election in March, um, just as informational, so that those things, people are aware, they understand the impact of the justice fund to the county, to the general fund, to our whole justice system. Um, the impact in total would be about a 30, over, uh, $31 million uh, a loss from revenue for the county. So it is big. It is very important. It covers our, um, it covers the court, I mean, it covers the, the jail, 911, the prosecutor's office, and the coroner's office. Um, but it also caught, um, covers if it's impacted and if it's gone, it's gonna impact also the court system and everything else, um, between both funds, the general fund and the justice fund. So, um, we're gonna make sure that those are still up there and that it is out there so that people know. You can call my office at any time with any questions, uh, myself, Jen Panjo, we can talk to you in regards to the impact of the justice fund and those. You can even call the office holders that are in those departments to see how important it is to them. So I just want to make that aware, and I figured started New Year with that.
Compliments on the charts.
Oh, and these will be everywhere.
That would be making.
And Audrey, I, I think that when they, uh, talked about Ralph Meacham's, uh, state of the county, uh, they, they talked about the sales tax as a whole, not as what comes to the county. They said the number that the entire sales tax generates, uh, and that is seven and a half percent, which only one and a quarter is directed by the county for local, you know, for, for our operations. So it wasn't 65 million. That is seven and a half, so divide that out to one and a quarter, which our amount between the general fund and justice fund is.
And then we have an additional quarter for the road tax, which is dedicated specifically for that purpose in a separate.
And that's, and that's excellent, because I think when you say that to the public about that amount of money, they think, wow, they have a lot of money, but it needs to be broken out to show people, the residents of Mahoney County, or any other county that's in this situation, the amount of money that we actually get versus what the state gets without an elected, without voting on it. And I hate to say that, but it's true.
We do have that document that was at the public hearings, and we'll add that one to the table, too.
I mean, it needs to be out there, so people understand that, because, you know, this, this election, this election is very crucial in Mahoney County.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, uh, it has been said, you know, like, we have the highest sales tax, and, and what they don't take is those pieces and parts and where those buckets are. There's very few counties that have a transit tax. We are one of those that have a transit tax when you look at the whole. The commissioners are not responsible for that transit tax, but when you look at the county as a whole, but when you just look at what the county government gets, we're pretty much right in the norm with the rest of the counties. We're right there. Um, we're not over, under. It's just right there, and that's like, what, 40, it was 40 something counties that have the same rate that we have that is.
52.
You're not the only one.
And the only reason we're even at, we would even be lower if we didn't do the road tax.
But that's a five-year tax. So in five years.
And all, and all of this that is county-controlled is initiated, uh, and voted on by the Mahoney County residents. So everything is voted on, and people that, and unfortunately, people that have their own self-serving interests at heart, uh, that run for office and don't know what county commissioner's responsibility is or what the job entails, they promote reducing the sales tax. There's only one remaining part of the sales tax that's voted on as renewal by Mahoney County residents, and that's the justice tax that Audrey, uh, referenced earlier. And the justice tax is 82% of the operations of the sheriff's department. So if, uh, people that are running for office want to promote defunding the sheriff's department, it's not gonna happen from this board. So we went out of our way to create the justice tax to fully fund the sheriff's department, and to reduce that or take it away would be a, a tragedy for Mahoney County, because that's 80%. Take away 80% of your salary and see how you plug the gap. You know, it doesn't happen. And so, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's reckless to go out and to, uh, promote your own political beliefs and try to get the, the sales tax reduced. So, um, it's, it's, it's important to get the facts and understand how departments are funded.
Now, I want to also say, and I'm a soapbox today, usually care so much. But I also want to say that the commissioners have been very responsible with the tax that goes in both funds. Um, they've been had the ability to establish stabilization reserves, which then gives us more security if something would happen. Economy can change from any point in time, and we've seen that with the pandemic. We've seen when we got a hit and the sales tax dropped, but we were able to, to ride through that because the reserves are there, and they kind of give you that cushion. It's like anybody else, if you have a checking account or something, you wanna ha-, or a savings account, you wanna have that reserve because you never know what's gonna happen in life, and that's the same thing that the commissioners have planned and how they have worked and administered the finances of the county to make sure that there is that ability to fall back on something if there's need. If we have a major calamity or something in the county, they have the ability and the funds to be able to do that. On a continuing basis, those dollars and our sales tax dollars and the revenues that come in, they cover our operating going forward. Our reserves are those extra that come from one-time monies and things like that, that they did not spend and they did not overspend, but they held those dollars back for purposes that need to be done. So.
Omar said that, you know, he'll come in and explain all of his portion of the financials. Uh, we'll have to give him some dates that he'll come in and do that. So that's another portion of it, what our bond council and our, our monies that are out there for different things that we might need. We're doing really well in Mahoney County, and that's because, as I say every meeting, we have a team.
Teamwork.
Teamwork, great people that work for us, great county officials.
And watch our spending.
And Jimmy won't let us spend a dime if they're not government-funded programs. So.
Yes.
Now we have Jen working in OMB to make sure Audrey don't put the decimal point in the wrong spot.
Right after.
So you put the decimal in the wrong spot?
It's like 1.5.
Did the same thing. It's okay.
Oh, oh, my God, she's training you that way.
When all you do is work with numbers, it all runs together.
You know what you're thinking, or you know what I mean?
You think something and you write something else.
Life doesn't go out the door that way. It's okay. All right, I'm sorry. It was just my soapbox.
No, and, and you're so right, because the, you know, the stabilization reserve, the bond rating, you know, all of that goes away if you don't have the funding coming in from the sales tax to, to, to generate money for the operations in the sheriff's department, because, you know, if, if you're not able to meet your obligations, you're making cuts, your stabilization, stabilization reserve, that's what, what we're mandated to have, and not everyone does have. That goes away. Your bond rating will fall, and then you'll end up spending more money to ensure all of your bonds and your notes that you don't have to insure now because our rating is so high. You know, so it's a, it's a snowball effect, and, you know, it happened in Mahoney County one other time that Anthony had to deal with for a long time, and, and, uh, you know, right now everything is in a good situation, a good place of, we do it in spite of all the reductions that the state has done on local government and on county government. You know, not, uh, not because of, but in spite of, you know, and, and, uh, you know, we've, we've been, we've been acknowledged by, you know, uh, opposite party, uh, state leaders on our conservative approach and our spending process and procedure, and, and the governor, you know, and, and I, I'm telling you, you know, and, and I might as well just finish up my soapbox while we're doing all this. So, you know, during the, during COVID, during the last, during ARPA funding and stuff, you know, uh, Governor Dewine, in my estimation, did an excellent job of leading us through a lot of difficult times. And, uh, he was very open. He was honest. He was responsible. Now, don't get me wrong, I, I only probably agree with about 30% of the things, you know, as, you know, as, as a belief, you know, and who we are and what our backgrounds are and things of that nature, but he's a good person trying to do the right thing for the right reasons. And unfortunately, once again, you know, he looked into things, and I don't know the specific details of the, the bill that they, they overrode. He, he, uh, line item vetoed the one bill.
Right.
Uh, and then the state legislature just yesterday voted to override his veto. So, um, you know, that, because they have numbers, you know, when you have the numbers, you do anything you want. You know, and, and what is it they say when you have all the numbers? You know, power corrupts, absolute power corrupts absolutely. So, uh, I have, I have faith and belief that, that Governor Dewine, just like he said, met with families, met with doctors, met with people, and, and he decided that should be vetoed because it puts families' rights, women's rights in the hands of government, which we've shown that we don't want 50%, we don't want 60% to have to, to, to vote on a bill to change the constitution. We want half plus one, like the world's voted since the beginning of time. You know, and, and we don't want the state legislature dictating women's rights, voters' rights, workers' rights, you know, and trying to change things that have been fought on by, by people, by unions, by businesses, you know, these things have come to, come into play because of the people's desire and their rights. That's how the constitution's generated. You know, it's voted on, the people have an opportunity to, to, uh, be able to say their piece, and the majority rules. You know, so, um, it's a travesty that, you know, that, that a minority of people, a minority of people in the legislature who represent the majorities think their personal beliefs should override the voice of the people, which to me is a travesty, so.
All right, three. True. What?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm letting everybody say their piece first. Yeah.
No, I echo what Dave said. My colleagues, Anthony and, and Audrey, uh, it's very crucial election, um, not only for Mahoney County, for all counties and also for state or federal government. We need to go into an election booth with our eyes open. We need to look at who supports the government that we live in and it's local, Mahoney County. You have a team here, and this team should be kept. And this team should be kept in place. And because of because of everything that maybe Davis said, Anthony has said, Audrey has said, Jimmy, we are fiscally responsible in this county. And everything we do is vetted through not only our financial people, our attorneys, and if need be, we go outside to have it looked at. So the people in Mahoning County need to see that. And I agree, and I I don't know if this is good to say here, but I do agree because people that run for position have no clue what you do. Have no clue. And to sit in a room or sit and listen to someone tell you things that do not relate to county government, that relate to other parts of government, whether it be state or federal, that's not county government, you need to understand what you're doing. And if you don't understand the position or or what we do as a group and a team here, then you shouldn't be in the hell race or any race. I don't care what it is, commissioner, mayor, representative, senator, congressman, no matter what. Understand what you are doing. Period. And I think we do that here. So that's my soapbox, I think I'll say that every meeting now. What do you think?
Well, Carol, that's a great segue and a fact that, you know, you can't let national issues, all the circus that's going on there, take our eye off the ball, what we have to do here locally. Because if we wait for them to come here to help us, you're going to be waiting a very long time. And as Dave has alluded to, you see what we have here as far as sales tax collection goes. This is what runs your government. If we did not have these sales tax in place, you would not have a county government. And we can all tell you how much we have lost in local government funds over the last five or six years, ten years, well over ten million dollars that we no longer get from the state. So I think us as a county, and as Dave said, you know, this sales tax, I'm going to really be campaigning mainly this year for this for this tax, because without it, you don't have a justice system. Okay, Audrey just said how much money that we're going to be losing. I mean, where do you make that much money up? So this is a very, very important issue here for Mahoning County. And and I believe the residents understand it, they know charity begins at home. You know, they want to have a jail, they want to have a prosecutor's office, we need courts. We need county government to function, and we have been strong. Our audits show it, our financials show it. I mean, we're audited more than anybody. Plus, we got Jim Fortunato, he's our in-house accountant. He does the Fortunato report, he keeps everything straight. So we're really, really blessed with the staff and Audrey and Anne and everybody that we have here in Mahoning County, working to keep this place going. So with that being said, Dave?
Yeah. You have something? I wanted to say, I forgot, I I got an opportunity to meet Tony Bernard. I I've heard the name forever, you know, and always well respected, always honorable, always in good line. You know, I worked in Warren for twenty five years. So I've I've had a lot of interaction in Trumbull County, you know, with 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 government. You know, it was it was funny, if you get elected in Trumbull County, or you get elected and you have a position of any type, you know, the, we were owned by the Germans, Thomas Steele, you know, Germans and Dutch, and they came to me and said, you go talk to the Trumbull County commissioners, the state reps, the senator, the trustees, the the city council, everybody. Because we don't want any local, we don't want any local elected people standing in a picket line because we try to do everything fair. You know, we don't want anybody opposing us. So I got to meet a lot of people, I I did not have an opportunity to meet you at the time, so.
And my family has some roots here too. My uncles, they started Bernard's Auto Parts here.
Oh, get out.
Yeah, they did.
Well, you know what, Tony, that's that's good to know, because I have been trying to buy.
My God, you should have never.
I have been trying to buy the sign on Market Street on by Handel's. The one of the first Bernard's Auto Parts on it.
Jerry is in charge of all that.
Because because the, all of the Bernard's Auto Parts had signs that said Ditzler Paints.
Sign's still there.
The same, the sign still says, no, actually, Ditzler Automotive Finishes. And that was the first mass produced paint that was put on the Model T Ford back, you know, in in Ford days. And my my father's great grandfather, him and his brother, started Ditzler Paints, from what I understand. And and it not close enough to do me any good, but I collect the memorabilia of the, I have clocks from the forties and fifties that say Ditzler Automotive Finishes. And it's funny, even back there, I have big calendars, and every calendar with Ditzler Paints has a woman, a dog, and a car on every one. Has a car with a woman sitting on it, a dog sitting next to it. And and the the Ditzler Automotive Finish.
That's true.
Clocks that I have, it it literally back in the forties, they were making, you know, things that you'd see today. It says, do it with Ditzler. And it says, Ditzler makes the best, Ditzler does it best on it. And it's 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 odd, because you wouldn't think they would use like slang terminology like that in the forties, but anyway. I was trying to buy that sign and my wife is, my wife says to me, are you kidding me? What are you going to do with it? And it's it's four foot high and six foot wide, I counted the blocks, I measured it, you know, and I I told him I'd take it down and I, you know, but I couldn't get the right connection. So.
Now you know.
If you. If you, because I'd I'd like to put it up in in my my garage where my cars are, so.
You should have that.
Yeah, so it's pretty cool. But anyway, I I I regress or I digress. You know, we we are we have a good team like Carol and Anthony, and we allude to. We work very well together, we complement each other, and we respect each other as a person and in their lives and their families. You know, we're we're not only colleagues, you don't work together, you know, most every day and night, you know, either on the phone or together without, you know, having a camaraderie and a friendship. And you have to do that when you work as a board of three, or else you'll never accomplish anything. And that shows in a lot of different areas, and it shows, Sheriff Green tells us all the time. You know, and and I, we always joke with each other, you know, Anthony's the young guy, me and Carol are the old ones. I I call Carol the oldest because, you know, because she is, and she's only a couple of years older than me. So, you know, we're we're about the same. But Anthony, you know, actually tomorrow is Anthony's birthday. And then on the fourteenth, which is Sunday, is Carol's birthday. So we always like to acknowledge, you know, each other's birthdays. They go out of their way to take care of me, you know, because I'm on Pearl Harbor Day, they say, you know, I was the, you know, I was the retaliation against the Japanese, you know, so. But, you know, it's 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 important, you know, it's always important to, you know, to make sure that we that we know, we know each other and to and to respect each other. So happy birthday, Anthony, on tomorrow on the twelfth, and happy birthday, Carol, on the fourteenth.
Happy birthday.
So, you know, we have a limited choir here, but we always have to sing. You know, so happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Anthony and Carol. Happy birthday to you.
That was very nice.
Thank you.
So Anthony, is it the big five oh today, you turning fifty today?
Seven years ago. I wish, yeah.
He's still, I'll trade. No, I won't trade, I like being seventy two. Well, I'm not seventy two yet, I'll be seventy two Sunday. I keep telling my brother, I think I'm fifty, I mean, I think I'm seventy. He goes, you better recount that. He says, are you getting heavy? But you know what? God gave us seventy two years coming up, and I'm pretty healthy and I'm a happy camper.
So.
I'm still feisty as ever, still feisty as ever, and and it could get worse as I get older.
Dave keeps her going.
Will attest to that. She hugs me every day, are you going to do this for three years? Oh, well.
Lot of time has passed. Thank you, same to you, Carol.
Well, happy birthday, God bless you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Lot of years have passed, boy, I tell you, it it goes faster and faster and faster. And thank God, you know, I always thank the Lord for giving me the parents that he gave me, the family that he gave me, the opportunities that I had for for what I've been able to receive and work for. And, you know, I always thank the Lord, you know, none of this happens without God. I've been very, very blessed, and the only thing I worry about now in life is my health. Nothing else really, you know, it's taking care of yourself, doing the right thing, be kind to people, help people as much as you can. Because one day, you know, when our number's up, it's up. And you want to make sure you leave a great legacy, and that's something that we've worked for very, very hard to do. So thank you, Dave and Carol.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Our next meeting, Nancy? I had to get her.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Carol made the motion. Second, second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Midoriwagani?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.